I call the July 11, 2017 Annual Organizational School Board Meeting to order. Ms. Bowers, please call the roll.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
At this time, we'll turn the next portion of the meeting over to Mr. Xavier Williams for the introduction for our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. At this time, I would like to invite to the podium to give our invocation pledge Lana Baschilia. Said that right? Baschilia? She is going to Spratly Gifted Center as a rising sixth grader, but just left Smith Elementary School as a fifth grader. And so, welcome Lana.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Chinese philosopher Lao Tzu once said, "A journey of a thousand miles begins with only a single step." My name is Lana Baschilia. I have just completed my fifth grade year at Smith Elementary School and will be attending Spratly for sixth grade in the future. I am grateful for the programs and opportunities I have had throughout Hampton City Schools and will continue my journey of learning throughout my entire life. Blues artist BB King once said, "The beautiful thing about learning is that no one can take it away from you." Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much Lana for expressing those good words of wisdom to us. And so, I have only a few questions for you, but how are you enjoying your summer so far?
It's been great.
Anything interesting happen so far?
Just, I like to go to the beach a lot.
Okay. Are you doing any reading or anything?
Yeah.
Okay. What's your favorite subject in school?
Science.
That's awesome. Would you like to introduce any of your family members in the audience with us tonight?
Uh, yeah. This is my grandma, April. My mom, Chana. My dad, CJ. And my awesome principal, Ms. Jenkins.
Well, thank you all for being here. And Lana, thank you for doing such a great job and have a great time at Spratly next year.
Thank you and thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. At this particular time, is there a motion to adopt the agenda for the July 11, 2017 School Board Meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
We'll now move to the next agenda item, and that is 2.01. On an annual basis, the School Board shall elect one of its members as chairman. Is there a motion for the chairmanship of the Hampton City School Board from July 2017 through the organizational meeting in July of 2018?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to have Jason Samuels continue as the Chair of the Hampton School Board. In the first year that he has been the Chair, he has worked very hard to look at the skill sets of all the School Board members so that we can become an even more cohesive and strong unit. In that year, he also has developed strong relationships with administrators, superintendents, staff, and others, not only in administration, but also in the schools, often asking the hard questions, but doing so in a respectful and courteous way, which bodes well for us again as an entire board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, I now turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And I would like to express my sincere appreciation to my board members for their willingness to allow me to continue to serve as the Chair for another year as we continue to move Hampton forward. And I also would like to say to the community of Hampton that I am committed to the work that I do and the board is also committed to the work that we do to make sure that our children are in a safe, secure environment where they are learning. So, thank you so much for that commitment. Next item on the agenda is item 2.02. And the School Board shall elect one of its member as a, one of its members as the Vice Chair. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Ms. Ann Cherry to continue as our Vice Chair.
Second.
I feel that she has done an excellent job as your assistant. She has worked diligently with you. She has a very good communication skills. She has very good communication skills. I think that she knows the school division very well and I think that she has assisted you as your Vice Chair in an excellent and exemplary way.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? None. Ms. Bowers, call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Cherry. Would you like to say a few words?
I always have something to say, which is probably part of the problem, but I am always committed to the school division. I am a native of this area and I am a graduate of Hampton City Schools. My two daughters attended Hampton City Schools and I worked for 17 years as Director of PR and Marketing. I love this school division and I love this board because this board is made up of individuals who are their own men and women. It doesn't matter what page they're on, it doesn't matter whether we agree or not, but at the end of the day, one thing we all agree on is we want to do what's best for students in this school division. So, I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Next item on the agenda is item 2.03. The School Board, on recommendation of the Superintendent, shall appoint Carol, Carolyn Bowers as the Clerk of the School Board. Is there a motion?
I move that Ms. Bowers be named Clerk of the Hampton School Board for this upcoming school year.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Cherry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that Ms. Bowers shall serve as the Clerk of the School Board for the school year 2018, 2017, 2018. Is there any discussion? None. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you.
You'll have to put up with us for another year. Item 2.04. The School Board, on recommendation of the Superintendent, shall appoint Diana Gallata, Deputy Clerk of the Board. Is there a motion?
I move we accept the Superintendent's recommendation and appoint Diana Gallata Deputy Clerk of the Board.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we appoint Diana Gallata Deputy Clerk of the School Board. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Where's Ms. Gallata?
She's not here. She's attending a conference.
She's attending a conference.
Okay. Well, next item on the agenda is item 2.05. The School Board shall fix a time, date, and place for holding regular meetings for the ensuing year. Ms. Mugler, is there a motion to make changes to that?
I move we adopt the proposed School Board meeting dates for 2017-18 with the two following amendments: to include a retreat on August 30 at 9:00 a.m. and to include a School Board reorganization for July 11, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Ms. Henry. Is there any discussion? With none, Ms. Bowers, please call the vote.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is item 6.2.06. The School Board shall approve a designee of the Superintendent to attend meeting of the School Board and represent the Superintendent in the absence of the Superintendent. Is there a motion?
I move we accept the Superintendent's recommendation of Dr. John Caggianno as his designee until July 31, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we accept Dr. John Caggianno to serve as the Superintendent designee. Is there a motion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Item 2.06. The School Board shall appoint a Freedom of Information Officer. Is there a motion?
Do I move, your recommendation is Ms. Gallata?
Ms. Gallata. That is correct.
Okay. I move that we approve the Superintendent's designee as Ms. Gallata as the Freedom of Information Officer.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Cherry that we appoint Ms. Diana Gallata as the Freedom of Information Officer. Is there any discussion? None. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is item 2.08. The School Board shall appoint a student representative and an alternate. And our student rep is Xavier Williams and Natalie Kidd serving as the alternate. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Xavier Williams as the student representative and Natalie Kidd as the alternate.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Mr. Harper that we approve Xavier Williams to serve as the student board rep for the school year of 2017, 2018. Congratulations, Mr. Williams. And so, let's call for the, I shouldn't even say congratulations first. Let's call for the vote, Ms. Bowers. Before that, are there any discussions?
We've already discussed.
We've already discussed and interviewed Mr. Xavier Williams as an outstanding young man in Hampton City School. And so, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Xavier, do you have something to say before you're sworn in?
I keep turning my mic off. First, I wanted to say thank you to the board. I never knew that the nine-year-old boy that came home after school to go watch a School Board meeting would actually have his dreams come true to sit on this board, but I'm so excited. I think I've told every single one of you that I've wanted this position for a long time and I'm more than excited. I can't wait to see what the school year holds. Natalie can't be here, she's on her way back from DC, but I can't wait to work with her. We've been talking ever since then and so, it's gonna be an awesome year. Thank you so much.
I have the awesome privilege to swear in Mr. Xavier Williams. He's a young man that I admire a lot and I am expecting great things from you, not only in this School Board, but also in your, as you matriculate and continue on in Hampton and then on to law school and then judgeship and so forth. So, could you raise your right hand, please? State your name.
I, Xavier Williams.
I do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
and that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully.
and impartially discharge the duties incumbent upon me
That I That was a hard one. Let's do that again.
And that I will faithfully
That I will faithfully.
and impartially
And impartially.
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
incumbent upon me
Incumvent upon me.
as the School Board Student Representative
As the School Board Student Representative.
according to my best ability.
According to my best ability.
Congratulations.
I got the speech out the way. Great. I have a lot of people in the audience and so, I ask that my parents just put their hand up. My mom's here and dad there in the back. Oh, stand up! Also, I want to recognize, it's a lot of families, so I'll just tell them to raise their hand too. Grandparents?
Oh, yes.
There we go. Family in general. There we go. Not only do I have my family here, but I also have my Hampton Youth Commission family, Tolu Ebikunway and Virgil Thornton. I also have my great principal, who is healthy and I'm glad that he's here, Mr. Davis. Also, I have a host of church family, so if you all will just whip your hand in the air. I'm trying to make sure I don't forget anybody. Oh, and my favorite youth pastors in the world from my church, Calvary Community Church, they are here. And also, my Spanish teacher Sierra, I have to acknowledge her, Senior Estrada. Thanks for being here. And then, any friends? Oh, poo, I got you right there. I have friends here also from all over. There we go. Friends and family, yeah. So, thank you all so much, it means a lot.
Mr. Chairman, I think that anytime we need to have a friendly house, we know who to call.
They may stay.
Okay. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda, which include item 4.01, personal report number Item 4.02, minutes of the School Board meeting on June 7, 2017. Item 4.03, minutes of the School Board meeting on June 21, 2017. Item 4.04, certification of the closed session of June 7, 2017. Item 4.05, certification of the closed session of June 21, 2017, and an amended report to the personal report. Is that correct, Ms.?
It's, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move approval of tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been, it's been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Mr. Dr. Woodhouse that we approve the consent agenda, including item 4.01 through 4.05. Is there any discussion? With none, Ms. Bowers, please call the vote.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
At, next item is item 5, which is the Superintendent and Staff Reports. At this time, I turn over the meeting to our Superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have the information before you with regards to food and nutrition services and I'll be more than happy if there are questions, as well as the May financials and so if there are questions there. But this is a pretty standard report and so if there are specific questions, I'll be more than happy to address them.
Are there any question by board members?
All righty. So, that concludes your
Yes, that would conclude the Superintendent's report and Ms. Visel Townsend will be joining us as we close out the books to give the board a very comprehensive report in terms of where we stand at our next meeting. Sorry, Ms., you are here. Come forward, okay? I was looking and saying, I knew that you were, okay, great.
I apologize. I was over in the corner. Good evening. Congratulations to Mr. Samuels and Mrs. Cherry on their reappointment as Chair and Vice Chair. I'm here this evening to present the May 31 financial statements. Our revenues for this time period were $189,295,283 and our expenditures are $180,423,330, respectively. These are a little higher than what they were at this year last time, but they are on target based upon our budgeted ADM of 19,500 pupils. We have submitted our spring report and our March ADM for this year was 19,426 students, which fell about 74 students short of what we had projected. The decreased enrollment will result in a loss of funds of $430,000 in addition to the $958,000 that the state did not submit to us this year for compensation. We are also projecting a potential revenue loss in Medicaid, indirect costs, and special education regional tuition. However, we've calculated the impact of these items on our fiscal year-end and the division has been proactive in maintaining that we are within projection for our budget. We have also included in the report categorical transfers from, to and from category nine for the month of May. And if there are any questions on the financials or the categorical transfers, I will entertain them at this time.
Are there any questions? Ms. Henry?
Just to remind myself, this is May. Obviously, this is July, but I mean, the report is, is May. Then, we do have a June report and then you have about a month to get everything double-checked and triple-checked and audited. Is that correct? So, about the end of August?
We actually are in audit probably until the end of October.
Okay.
We will present, but by September, we will have our June final numbers, so we will present June at that time and also categorical transfers for the year during the September meeting. Generally, in August, we don't present financials because we are in
There's a lot of switching back and forth.
Audit during that time.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to remind everybody that it takes the mills of the gods grind slowly with this process and it takes a little while for it to get done.
It does take a while.
Thank you.
Any other comments or question from board members?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Visel.
And so now, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Superintendent's report.
Fantastic.
And thank you, Ms. Townsend.
Next item is item 6. Hearing of any delegations or presentation of handwritten communications or petition?
We have, I sent you one.
And I have one. And Ms., Ms. Bowers, can you read the protocol, please?
Citizens are invited to address the School Board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the School Board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Adult speakers shall identify themselves by full name and address. Minors shall provide their full name and if applicable, their grade and school of attendance. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the School Board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the School Board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual students as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the School Board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the School Board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the Superintendent for research and response. The Superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The School Board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
And I see we
You have, you have one.
So, we have several speaker, speakers tonight and our first speaker is Ann Andrew. Ms. Andrew?
Hello, everyone. My name is Ann Andrews. I'm a resident of the city of Hampton since 1988, 1998. I'm originally from Raleigh. Spent a lot of time with the Air Force, so I've been everywhere. Currently, I'm a full professor at Thomas Nelson and in total of all of that, I have 37 years' teaching experience from second, fifth grade all the way through high school and then on into college. Teaching Teaching was never a goal for me when I was a kid, in fact, I used to tell people it was the last thing I wanted to do. And then, when I got to college and I needed to get my bachelor's degree finished, I needed money, and someone said, "Go to the Education Department, they got money." I said, "Okay," and they gave me a full scholarship with the stipulation that I teach for two years in Utah. I said, "Okay," we got orders the day I graduated, so I never taught in Utah. Our next assignment took us to Germany, where I substitute teach a lot of classes, because they wouldn't let me teach full-time, because I'd never taught full-time in the States, and that was their rule at the time. From there, we went to Southern California and Victorville in the high desert, and I got a job teaching seventh-grade language arts at Apple Valley Middle. That was my really first foot in the door in real teaching. It was interesting. What happened was, I fell in love with teaching. I didn't expect that. I should say, I fell in love with watching my students learn, and we became a unity of learning together. I don't know who learned more, me or them. Over the years, I continued to attend classes, worked on my master's in social work, almost got my master's in English composition, but we got orders and moved, and I figured, "I'm sorry, I know how to teach English composition, I don't need the master's." I'm here tonight because I want to express support for a friend and colleague, and someone who carries and expresses my ideals in many areas. Jason Samuel showed up in my yard about four or five years ago at a yard sale. Keisha was with him, and in our discussions, we discovered we had a lot in common. He was a LaMay of Norfolk State, so was I. His degree was social work, so was mine. So, we just sort of got to be friends. We had a lot of time sharing, I have a pool in my backyard, so we had big pool parties. And then, Keisha introduced me to Chickassee. Oh, boy. I never knew what that was. I totally support Jason's position as head of the school board. In the past year, he has served to better serve schools for all our children in our community. His answers to two of the questions on y'all's website really struck me. You asked him, "Why did you decide to run for the board?" And then you asked him, "In your opinion, what are the three greatest strengths of Hampton City Schools?" He said, "My desire to run was based on my passion to ensure all of Hampton's young people, without regard to race, gender, religion, background, socioeconomic status, have access to receive innovative quality education to ensure their success. I believe we must always be in the mode of insisting on continuous improvement for our students, which is something our children and families of Hampton all deserve." And then what would he think were the greatest strengths? And he thought, "The division of schools has choices that prepare students for lifelong learning, a strong and effective strategic plan that makes a roadmap for them to succeed in the twenty-first century. A career focused on school division that provides its employees the opportunity to do advance." Jason cares about our schools and the city of Hampton. He is open to all areas of diversity, and as a many-year resident or a member of the Commission on Unity, I highly support that. I have on my wall a picture that Jason's son drew about two, three years ago. It was just, you know, crayon picture on a piece of construction paper, and he said it was his family. Well, there's his daddy, there's his mama, there's Jason, there's his sister, and there's this other person. And we said, "Well, who is that?" And he said, "That's you, Ms. Ann, you're part of my family too." So, I incredibly felt honored by that, and he often wanders over to my house to visit And I can't even begin to express all, but Hampton has been one thing for me that I didn't expect, and that was, I was born in Charlotte, grew up in Raleigh, moved there when I was two, didn't actually leave there till my mother died, because we kept the house there and kept going back every other weekend. But I missed Raleigh, I missed what Raleigh stood for, and I discovered that Hampton does the same thing. I feel at home here, I feel connected here, I feel like this place has, in its heart, the heart of everybody. So, I appreciate that, and I'm also very prejudiced to make sure schools do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Alana Samuels.
Good evening, board, and everyone in the audience. My name is Alana Samuels. My name is Alana Samuels. I am a rising freshman at Hampton High School, home of the Cravers. I know I saw Mr. Davis in here, but he might have stepped out. Some of you might know that Chairman Samuels is my dad, and, oh my God, I'm already crying. I just want to say congratulations to that. I know you worked so hard for this, and there have been many nights where you've just been stressed, and I've had to let you take your time, but I want to say thank you to the board. Alana, this for him, and also congratulations to Ms. Cherry. You're like a mom to me, I just want to say congratulations. And congratulations to Xavier, you're like such a cool person. So, congratulations to all of you, and thank you to the board for just allowing my dad this opportunity to do this. And I'm also representing students here. I know that a lot of the times, students complain about the schools, "Oh, oh my God, the food is nasty, there's no air conditioning, oh my God, the teachers suck," like, but really, Hampton City Schools is amazing. There are some school divisions out here, that are out here looking crazy, but Hampton City Schools, it comes together, and it might not seem like that all the time, but as students, we really want to say thank you for all that you do for us. And so, congratulations to everyone that was appointed something tonight, and thank
Our next speaker is Keisha Samuels.
Good evening, Chairman Samuels, Vice Chairwoman Cherry, Hampton School Board members, Dr. Smith, executive leadership, and Hampton community. I would like to thank the Hampton School Board for entrusting and supporting Mr. Samuels and Ms. Cherry to represent this board in their prospective leadership positions. I feel I would be remiss if I did not come before you in support of Mr. Samuels. There are a few attributes regarding Mr. Samuels that I, as well as many in this community, observe and feel: your integrity and faith, your ability to connect with people, your compassion, your ability to validate young people, administrators, teachers, faculty, staff, and anyone who walks in your path, your kindness, your commitment to the families of Hampton, your genuineness, your visibility and support at school events, your empathy of others when they are faced with challenges, your courage to stand in the midst of adversity, your ability to manage your emotions and always remain professional, your appreciation for doing what is right for Hampton City Schools and the community. While my opinion to some may be biased, my perspective as an educator, parent, and citizen can be quantified. Over the past year, under the leadership of Chairman Samuels, Vice Chairwoman Cherry, and the board, I have witnessed the engagement with community partners that have proven beneficial for the students, faculty, staff, and overall Hampton community. The State of the City address, the Academies of Hampton, and the recent budget presentation are just to name a few. They say if you really want to know who a person is in public office, look at what they did before they were in office. Mr. Samuels has served his community as a foster care social worker, adult services social worker, senior advocate, therapeutic mentor, vacation Bible school teacher, soccer coach, and neighborhood association leader, neighborhood commissioner, and active member on numerous boards throughout the local, state, and national level. Much of this involvement was prior to him ever taking any oath of office. Mr. Samuels is doing the work and verbalizes to young people that they matter and they have a bright future. You stand as a role model and inspiration to many young people in this community. I see the man that personally will drop everything to listen attentively to the concerns of parents, and person, or those who call. I see the man who loves his wife and children, and always demonstrates love and service to and for others. For those who are here this evening and support, thank you. For those who encouraged, embraced, and displayed respect for Mr. Samuels, I say thank you, and you have no idea what that support means. In closing, I would like to extend my appreciation to this board for being progressive as Hampton City Schools continues, excuse me, to move in a forward and upward trajectory, blazing the trail, and being one of the best functioning school boards in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item seven, other items for action. We are going to take these items, item seven point one through seven point six individually, and starting with item seven point zero one, certification of the closed session of June the seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the certification, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we approve item seven point zero one, certification of the closed session of June the seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Harper?
I've stayed.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. Next item is item seven point zero two, food and nutrition service budget transfer. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the food and nutrition service budget transfer.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve item seven point zero two, food and nutrition service budget transfer. Is there a discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. Next item is item seven point zero three, approval of the sole source authorization.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of sole source authorization.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Cherry and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve, approval of sole source authorization, and the purpose of this is to approve procuring on a sole source basis for all curriculum required materials and services K through twelve, recommended by Curriculum Study Committee and adopted by the Hampton School Board that are not on state contract and are available for sale only from a single source, as well as other non-curricular materials and services that may be required. As specific procurement requests arise, the superintendent or his designated representative shall review and certify to the procurement office, Division of Finance, those that meet the criteria for sole source procurement. All curriculum-related and other requests not so identified shall be subject to applicable requirements for competitive bidding. Are there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just appreciate you explaining that. It's, it's a technicality that we have to approve this every year, and it's so that if there is some kind of item that we need, whether it's curricular or mechanical or whatever, that the state is not available on a state contract, that we authorize procurement to use the best sole source for that.
Yes, ma'am. Any other comments or remarks? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. Next item is item seven point zero four, V S B A Code of Conduct for School Board Members. And at this time, each member will sign the Code of Conduct as it is read by Ms. Bowers.
As a member of my local school board, I will strive to be an advocate for students and to improve public education, and to that end, I will have integrity in all matters and support the full development of all children and the welfare of the community, Commonwealth, and nation. I will attend scheduled school board meetings. I will come to board meetings and inform concerning the issues under consideration. I will make policy decisions based on the available facts and appropriate public input. I will delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and establish a process for accountability of administrators. I will encourage individual board member expression of opinion and establish an open two-way communication process with all segments of the community. I will communicate in accordance with board policies, public reaction, and opinion regarding board policies and school programs to the full board and superintendent. I will bring about desired changes through legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing all laws, state regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. I will refrain from using the board position for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. I will respect the confidentiality of privileged information and make no individual decisions or commitments that might compromise the board or administration. I will be informed about current educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs, such as those sponsored by my state and national school boards associations. I will always remember that the foremost concern of the board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the public schools of Virginia. Therefore, I will always strive to demonstrate appropriate behavior, conduct, as a public school board member.
Do I hear a motion to approve the item four point zero four, Virginia V S B A Code of Conduct for School Board Members?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the V S B A Code of Conduct for School Board Members.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we approve the V S B A Code of Conduct for School Board Members. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. Next on the item is item seven point zero five, appointment to Special Education Advisory Committee, known as SEAC, and there are two individuals, Ms. Mafus and Ms. Shackelford. Is there a motion to approve these appointments?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, I move that we accept the appointments recommended by the SEAC committee. the C I C committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Cherry that we approve the appointment to a Special Education Advisory Committee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. Next on the agenda is item seven point zero six, Revision of School Board Policy, E E A A Student Transportation. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the revision of School Board Policy, E E A A Student Transportation.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve item seven point zero six, Revision of School Board Policy, E E A Student Transportation. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye. Next item is item for information, item eight point zero one, a notice Hampton City School Policy are available to the public online at www.hampton.k12.v8.us. Next item is item eight point zero two, Board and Committee Appointments. And at this time, I would present to the public the appointment of each board members to their designated board and so forth. Okay. Hampton City School Board Assignments. While board members serve on Hampton City School Board, they also serve on other community boards and council, starting with Ms. Ann Cherry, who will be serving on the Town and Gown Committee. Ms. Cherry was selected by the, by City Council to serve on the Hampton Department of Human Services Advisory Council. Congratulations, Ms. Cherry. Next is Mr. Harper. Mr. Harper has no assignment at this time. However, Mr. Harper serves as the youth director with the Bull Williams Organization, which represents years of community involvement. Thank you, Mr. Harper. Next, we have Ms. Henry, and Ms. Henry will be assigned to two boards. First, the C T E Board, and then the W H R O Board as an alternate. Ms. Henry also served as the president of the Hampton Healthy Families Partnership, Incorporated. Next, we have Ms. Mugler, and Ms. Mugler will also serve on two boards. Ms. Mugler will be assigned to the Federal Relation Network Board and the W H R O Board. Ms. Mugler was appointed to serve on the Virginia College Saving Plan, board by Governor Terry McAuliffe. Next, we have Dr. Woodhouse, who will be appointed to the New Horizon Board, and Dr. Woodhouse also served as the chair of the Tidewater Peninsula Baptist Association. Next, we have Mr. Kilgore, and Mr. Kilgore will be assigned to the V S B A Board as a voting delegate. And Mr. Kilgore also assists with various nonprofit organizations throughout the year. Next, you have Mr. Samuels. Mr. Samuels will be assigned to the City of Hampton Purchasing and Procurement and Oversight Committee. Mr. Samuels also serves on the Peninsula Agency and Agent Advisory Council. So, you see, our board members are extremely involved and committed to Hampton and the citizen that we serve. At this time, I will have entertained any further information from board members and the superintendent, starting with the superintendent, then board members, in that order.
No further business from the superintendent, congratulations. And I would ask staff members, the administrative team, to please join me as superintendent, certainly acknowledging the Board for their dedication and commitment and all that they provide on a daily basis in support of what we do in terms of our mission. So, thank you so very much, and we appreciate you.
Mr. Xavier would like to make a comment?
First, I would like to say thank you to Alana for getting up to speak. One thing that Natalie and I both would like to work on is allowing students within Hampton City Schools to come and get their voices heard and to express their thoughts and comments during board meetings. So, it's great to see that we already have that starting here at this meeting. Secondly, I was able to talk to our Coordinator of Athletics and Drivers Education, Ms. Beth Mayer, and I wanted to allow you all to write down the dates of our high school's first opening game at Darling Stadium. Let's get our board members at Darling Stadium for football games, okay? So, the first game for Bethel High School will be August twenty-fifth at seven o'clock against Amory, and then Kikatan, their first game, will be September first against Bethel at seven. Hampton's first game will be against Warwick September eighth at seven. And Phoebus's home game will be September sixteenth against Woodside at seven. So, go out and support our high school students as they have their first opening game within Hampton, and that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Williams. Any other comments and remarks from board members? All right. Our next meeting will be on August the second. Our next regular meeting will be held on August the second, two thousand seventeen, at six thirty P. M. at Jones Magnet Middle School. Also, our next work session will be held on August the thirtieth, and that will be held at a location to be announced in Hampton.
August sixteenth is the work session.
Okay, August sixteenth is the work session, and then the thirtieth is the retreat. And the sixteenth is at the Rupert Sargent Building, and then we will have a work session on August the thirtieth. Thank you so much for sharing that information, keeping me on task. So, the work session will be held on August the sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, at the Rupert Sargent Building, and then our retreat will be August the thirtieth, and that location will be announced. Hearing no other further information or remarks, meeting adjourned.